We'll roll call and bring this, reconvene this ongoing meeting.
I thought there was going to be a lot more people here than that.
We'll do, we'll do roll call and then pledge allegiance.
Ladies?
Commissioner Newman? Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
And Chairperson Welsh?
Here. Okay, so we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to reconvene our ongoing zoning meeting. And first, I'd better read my little note here. It says, "This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It's also been recorded for future viewing. Meetings can be viewed at the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Alex Seidey. And as a reminder, if you could please turn off or turn your cellphones to vibrate. And if you come up to speak tonight, just sign in your name and I think we know who most of you are out there. So with that being said, we'll move on to oral communications. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Okay. And this opportunity is for public comments. This is for items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you have an item that you'd like to speak about that's not on the agenda tonight, we'll give you three minutes to speak. Okay, not seeing any. Come back to commission comments.
I have one.
Okay.
I noticed in going through our zoning, new zoning map, looking at the material for the proposed changes for the transient occupancy, that the new zoning map indicated that Riverview Avenue and Blue Gum on the side closest to Capitola Avenue, it shows that on the new map, all of those are one properties being rezoned to neighborhood commercial. And I didn't remember us talking about that. And, and talking to the staff just now, they indicated that that was a mistake. And I just wanted to have that on the record, that those properties will be changed back in the final map to R1.
Yeah, Commissioner Westman, that was brought to our attention. And it is a mistake and a staff's intention only to correct that. But before we come back for formal recommendation, we'll go through the map again with a fine tooth comb parcel by parcel, make sure everything's copacetic. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
Great, then I guess we'll move on to the public hearing and our zoning code update.
Okay, thank you. For you tonight is, we're continuing with our zoning code update. And tonight is a little bit unique that we've got the expansion of the vacation rental overlay. And that was, we sent out noticing to residents within 300 feet of the areas that will be looked up at tonight. And you've got extra additional public comment that was received since the packet went out on Friday afternoon, and that's been printed and placed at your seats. And there's also copies of that at the rear, at the rear table. Also, we'll be reporting back about village parking and what we heard from our recent discussion with the city council. So as I stated, we'll start off with the expansion of the vacation rental overlay. And in between each of these two sections, we'll stop and get feedback. I won't go into parking until we've gone through the discussion on the vacation rental overlay. So what is the transient rental overlay? The transient rental overlay is an overlay on the zoning map. And properties that are within the overlay may rent their properties as a vacation rental. And then that leads to, well, what is a vacation rental? And we've had, vacation rental is defined as the occupancy for hire for real property or portion thereof for a period of less than 30 consecutive calendar days. So only in the area that you see vacation rental is a property owner allowed to rent for less than 30 days. Also, within our definition, it also states that you're allowed to loan out your house to a friend. That's not, you're not taking in money. A friend is welcome to come stay at your house. And you're also allowed to do housing swaps. So if you know someone in Montana and you swap your house out for a week, that is not, not illegal in our definition. So is there, when you look at our map, you see there's part of it is pink or purplish pink, and the other is aqua. And it always raises questions of whether or not the Riverview TRO is different from the Central Village TRO. When you go through our zoning code, there's no difference in the regulations that are applied. It's just the overlay to the Central Village area is in the blue color and the Riverview area is in the pink. And when we update the code, it will be in one color.
Quick interrupt question. When I was reading it today, it specifies that in the Central Village overlay zone, you can't have an office or a personal service or anything else in that zone? And it doesn't say that for all of the other zones? Is that true in all zones?
Did you see that in the TRO or in the Central Village?
In the, in the vacation rental use, I guess, overlay is the way that it's worded in these documents?
In the update? In the update, we clarify that you need to get a permit?
Okay, I'll find it here.
Okay, keep going. So, within the new zoning code, the terminology will be changed from transient rental overlay to vacation rental use overlay zone. So it's really clear what the, instead of utilizing the word transient, it goes to vacation. And then another question that's come up in a lot of phone calls from the public is, why are we even discussing the expansion of a boundary this evening? And the reason for that is that during the zoning code update, we've had inquiries from different property owners. And also, this past summer, we did a citywide enforcement effort for our transient rental zone. And anyone who is outside that zone cannot be operating. And during that process, other, you know, parties were interested in how, well, how can we be included? So there was property across the street on Capitola Avenue and then also on El Camino. So that's why we're here tonight discussing the boundary expansion as part of the zoning code update.
So are we going to talk about the wording first and then the two areas that you want to expand into? Or how are we going to do this? Because I have some questions about the new wording.
Sure. We, we can start with wording. Yeah. So I'll quickly show you on the map, the two areas that we'll be talking about tonight. And then we'll get into the wording and then we'll take a closer look at these. So the areas in blue are currently in the transient rental use overlay. The parcels in orange are the ones to be considered tonight. And then I, when we get into the conversation, we can discuss them each at one time, the ones along Capitola Avenue, Blue Gum and Riverview, and then the ones on El Camino and Monterey Avenue. So with that, I'll go back and we can talk about the language within the TRO and then get into a discussion on the new properties.
Well, I had a lot of issues with the language too, to make it just a little cleaner, tighten it up a little bit. And I don't know if Commissioner Westman maybe has the same.
Right. Yeah, I have that. And I also have issues with the parking part of it. Because the new areas that you're proposing to add are not permitted to get transient parking permits to park in the Pacific Cove lot unless we go back and we amend our LCP to allow that to happen. Because it specifically, I believe, lists the streets where you can have the transient parking permits. So it seems like for those people who are not in that district, we're going to have to say, you either have to have a parking space or you can't have a vacation rental.
So in regards to the parking, I, I concur with your statements about not all these properties are eligible for it. And maybe we can clarify the language. The existing language in the code talks about the parking for a vacation rental, either as we provide it onsite or in Pat Cove.
Right.
And so we're trying to carry forward that language. But if you have a suggestion to make it clear, we'd be happy to revise it.
Well, it seems like we have to say something in there that for the properties that are not eligible for transferable permits for the Pacific Cove lot, that they have to provide parking onsite. And I know for, you know, the new building that was going to get built on Capitola Avenue, for example, and they want it to be transit rental, they will have parking. So now it won't be a problem for them. I mean, I just don't think we can, I think it's ambiguous to say, you know, it's one or the other. But then somebody comes in and says, well, I want to do it and I want a permit. And we now say, well, you're not in the right zone to get a permit.
So right now, the sentence is parking may be onsite or within Pacific Cove parking lot with proof of permit. If it was changed to parking may be onsite, or if the property is eligible to obtain a Pacific Cove parking permit?
Yeah. That would work for me.
Where would, where would the normal homeowner go to find out if they were eligible to receive a parking permit?
City Hall.
City Hall.
Rich, to make that just read better, just add if eligible at the end of the sentence.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see in the LCP, what I just saw, it says a limit of 50 permits for Pat Cove parking lot made to be issued for village permit holders and transient occupancy permit holders. Is there another area where it talks about specific streets?
Yes, there's another area where it talks about the village parking program. And it specifically lists the streets where people are eligible to get the transferable permits. And it's listed by street in the...
Yeah, it does that, but it doesn't tie, well, how I read it, it didn't tie it back to the transient. It just talks about provisions of public parking on a daily basis along Prospect, Grand, Cliff Avenues provide public access to scenic overlook.
Yeah, not that section. There is a, I'm absolutely positive, there's language in there with the Coastal Commission that list, you know, the specific streets.
Okay. Good.
Additional edits?
Oh, so I'm thinking that the most productive way to do this might not be in the, maybe, I mean, because they're not substantive. They're basically, to clean up the terminology, I think we should be using the word vacation rental permit. And I think D, subsection D and subsection E two kind of duplicate each other in an awkward way. I think the most productive way to do this maybe is if I, at a separate time, talk directly and we can go over it in five minutes.
That's fine, okay.
Yeah, that's fine, it's me.
That's great.
Yeah, because it's all just form.
Okay.
Sure.
Would it be appropriate to reference the LCP? I'm just thinking if somebody comes in and they're reading all of this, trying to check out their, you know, home that they're about to buy. It was never evident to me that there are specific streets that are and aren't eligible. Should we just reference the, the LCP for eligibility?
I'm making the assumption that staff's going to put together something and put it up on their website about the vacation rental zone and how, how to get your permit, just like they have things on the website about how to get a parking permit and who's eligible and all of that.
And it would be appropriate to...
I would be comfortable with them producing some sort of document. Because I don't, to be honest, I don't think the average person can come and read this and really figure it all out without a lot of work anyway. You need to sort of translate it into everyday language.
And we do have that available online.
Yeah.
A little cheat sheet on how to get a vacation rental. And we'll update that as the zoning code is updated.
And I had, I had two questions and both, well, actually, it's one. And every, goes back to the 30-day-plus rentals that are outside that TRO area. On item two, where it talks about transient occupancy registrations required for each rental, a business license and a transient occupancy tax registration must be obtained. Is, now, I understand that in, outside of this transient area, we have to allow 30-day-plus rentals. It's the state, it doesn't, can we require them to have a business license though if they're trying to get, if we know for a fact they're online, renting their place out for more than 30 days, can we require them to have a business license?
I really don't know the answer to that. I suspect no, but we could look into it to confirm.
Well, they're doing business. We can't, we can't stop them from doing that type of business and we can't get the transient occupancy tax. I understand that, but...
I think the, their argument would be, well, you can advertise in the newspaper, you can advertise on Craigslist, why can't I use this platform? It's just a way to advertise it.
But if you have any business, it is a business in this city, right?
It is, but you know, to me, it's much more like somebody renting out their home or their apartment to somebody and advertising it differently.
Except that it's furnished and...
Well, it's on a vacation rental site. That's my, my thing. I, I just would like to be able to tie down this 30-day rental somehow. And it seems to me that if they're doing a business and the businesses are renting their home as a vacation home, they're not renting it as, to an everyday user. It's a, it's an obvious rental, because it's on a vacation listing, that we may be able to require a business license. And if that was it, then we'd be able to maybe have a little better...
I could confer with city attorney on that and, and get an answer.
Okay. And that was, and then the other one was, it kind of went to the same thing about advertising on the internet. If these houses that are the 30-day-plus that they're advertising, that they list their business license on there. That way, we'd be able to at least have some insight on if someone's following our rules or policies.
But a lot of those more than 30-day rental places also work through like beach house rentals. So would you want the homeowner to have a business license in addition to beach house rentals business license? I think it could get really complicated.
Yeah, I think, I think if they're doing it on these VRBOs and they're renting them as an obvious vacation rental for 30 days at a time, in fact, we know they're not, they're saying they are, but the fact is they're not doing that. But to me, that they should have a business license in the city, so...
So that's actually a good question. Because I don't know for certain that beach house rental gets a business license for each one of the units they rent. It's just beach house rental has the business license.
During our code enforcement sweep, it was under one license for all of beach house rentals and then, but we, they're each allowed, they're each required to come in and get their, the planning conditional use permit for the individual units. So they, they're under the umbrella of the business license of beach house rental, but they each need their own transient rental permit.
Well, and that, that might be because there are some of those people renting under the auspices of beach house rentals. And there's others who are doing it on their own in addition with VRBO or Airbnb. So they're using both platforms.
Right, that's what I was thinking. There are, there are houses that beach house rentals rents that you can go on verbo and they will be listed on there, not under beach house rentals. So it seems like that's something that probably just want to clarify, you know, if beach house, you're, you're operating under beach house rentals...
When you rent under them, you go under their license. And when you rent under, not under another business license, you have to have your own license. Right? I mean, somebody's got to have a business license to rent that property. And so it's either vacation, the beach house rentals, or it's the individual running through VRBO or Airbnb or HomeAway or whatever.
Right. Because a lot of units are listed on various sites as well as beach house rental site. And on the other sites, you're renting directly from the homeowner, not going through beach house rentals.
So I think the answer to the chairman's question is that you definitely can require a business license. Because in the city of Santa Cruz, I have a commercial building where the leases are five years or more, and I have to have a business license.
Right. Yeah, I think...
Well, it may give us the opportunity to kind of maybe crack down on some of these that are, we can't stop them from listing their house for 30 days or more. But by having a business license, we could understand who's complying.
Yeah, we'll follow up on both those questions and report back at the next meeting.
Because you don't want to have all the people that rent houses, you know, not through...
No, my target's the 30-day people, the ones that are technically, they're, they're using a technicality to illegally rent their houses and outside of that overlay zone. So, that's all I had.
Okay. So would you like to look at the different areas and discuss?
One step backwards, short-term rental, is that in the glossary?
Yes.
Okay.
Put it on my, the slide show. Okay, so first, we'll look at along Capitola Ave, Blue Gum and Riverview. And on the right-hand side of the slide, you can see the additional properties that were noticed for possible, for consideration this evening. And I should also state that tonight, if the planning commission were to make a recommendation, it would be a recommendation to city council. And then the city council would make the ultimate decision on whether or not to include these properties in the transient rental overlay. You have the ability to tell us that you only want 401 through 407 included, or none of them included, or all. This was just, we took a look at the block and what made sense on a block basis of just including everything in the block with the idea of we could fine tune it at the meeting and go with your direction. So, thank you.
Well, I, I'm happy to start because I have, I have no difficulty with the properties on Capitola Avenue. The ones that you show on Blue Gum are cottages that are in the historic district. They do not have parking and they are not eligible for getting a permit in Pacific Cove. So it seems to me that it's a little disingenuous to list them on a map saying you can be a vacation rental when in reality, there's no way because of other things in the ordinance that you could actually do it. So if, if I got, I would say Capitola Avenue's fine, but the ones on Blue Gum are not fine.
I have a couple of questions about the noticing. The notices went out two weeks in advance? How long have notices been out?
Ten days in advance.
Ten days. Did you get any affirmative from any of those people?
In terms of emails, I, actually, I did get a phone call from a property owner along Capitola Avenue. I think it's the second home in, it's the new, the home that was recently painted with the, it had a leather store in it previously. She called and said she was thrilled to see that her property was listed as a possibility. Also, 419 Capitola Avenue, the owners are here this evening, but that's the owners of Fuse Architecture who came in recently for a permit and had asked about this. And so they've been inquiring regularly of when the planning commissioner would be hearing this item.
So aren't, aren't 401 through 407 all commercial? Fire station and three commercial properties?
There's one very small cottage.
There is? Next to the fire station.
Next to the fire station.
And they don't have any parking?
And the other three, I don't, I mean, is this for the future maybe if they got torn down? Why are we making them into transient occupants?
I think the way we approached it was, there was, I think Katie mentioned, a couple of property owners along Capitola Avenue that expressed an interest, you know, over the past year or so. And just geographically kind of squaring off that area as the zone was what we did just to present it for discussion's sake. But we're not necessarily advocating that any one of these particular properties be included in the zone.
Well, because of the break that you have between the two yellow blocks, I don't really think you need the four commercial ones and the dress holes to be included to make it sort of work logically. You could just have that one block there.
Well, and just because they're in their zone doesn't mean that they get a permit. If they don't have, if they can't show they have parking, then we wouldn't issue a permit, right?
Well, there are a number of commercial, I mean, in the village, we have commercial buildings and they're in the transient overlay district.
They're in the overlay district, but they're not...
They're not.
Yeah, but we're specifically expanding at the four properties that can't use it.
Now...
There's, at the commercial, the new commercial building, there is an upstairs room that possibly they could close that off and have a...
They don't have any parking yet.
Yeah, but they conditioned that, that they couldn't... Oh, yeah. Yeah. That one's different. But I don't know. I think that over time, things could change and that's why we just...
Okay.
But yeah, there's a lot of mixed use throughout.
Go ahead, go.
I have a couple of concerns about changing any part of our visitor-serving overlay district. One of them is a little bit similar to the parking, our parking situation and permit parking. And that is, anytime that you change and expand permit parking, it's kind of like shockwaves reverberate out further away from the district in, in homes that have even less to do with parking problems having to do with visitors. And so I feel the same is true with this, that I am not in favor of expanding it in any, in any one of these for that reason. And also, I spoke with staff this morning and asked a question. And I recall when we were working years ago when I was on the council, we were, we had changed or were thinking about changing our mobile home park ordinances. And I can't recall exactly what happened, but I know that we either got ourselves into trouble or had the potential of getting ourselves into trouble by changing our ordinances and thereby opening up a can of worms to allow for lawsuits for others who might want to do this. In, in response to that, I read an article, and I can't recall whether it was in the Wall Street Journal or the Santa Cruz Sentinel, having to do with VRBO and, and those other businesses suing cities for this kind of thing. And it seemed to me as though they had a weakness because they had changed their ordinances. I feel that's, that's something that we really need. If we're, if we have any will at all to change any part of this, adopt any of these, we need a legal recommendation about whether that weakens our position going forward. Because this whole industry is a, it's a moving target. And I, I just don't, I just don't think this is the time to be doing this. I think we need, this all needs to shake out over the next few years before we make any changes to ours.
Yeah, Commissioner Ortiz, we did reach out to the city attorney prior to tonight's meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't able to connect to have any opinion to share with you this evening. What I do know about those cases, and I think there's multiple, I think both San Francisco and Santa Monica are being sued by Airbnb. But in both cases, those agencies are tightening their regulations to try to restrict vacation rentals. Whereas ours would be a, you know, a minor adjustment to slightly expand it. My guess is that it wouldn't be as alarming to them. But nonetheless, I agree, we'd like to, you know, hear something from the city attorney before we drop the gavel on a change.
So are we going to hear from the public?
Anybody? Yeah, do you have words of wisdom?
No, I have nothing further.
What are we going to hear from the public?
Yeah, I will.
I only have one other comment that, that is of concern to me, and it's actually twofold. One is whenever you are in a residential zone and you're converting from residential to a visitor-serving use, I think that you need to get a weigh-in from all the property owners in that zone. And everybody has to be affirmative that, yeah, they want to do that before you do it. Because it really is going to change the nature of living in that neighborhood. The second thing is, we have so few places that are available for long-term renters, for leases. When I first moved to California, they told me the difference between renting and leasing is that during the summertime, the rents go up, skyrocket. And so students and people who live here full-time wind up not being able to live in these places year-round. And I think that that can be detrimental, again, to the nature of the residential area that you're in. So we're looking at two completely different neighborhoods, I think, between this part of the map and the other part of the map.
Right, I think we're just talking about this neighborhood right now, right?
But when I was looking at those two different ones, it's like, well, what about the backside of those units? If you do just cut it off, so it's just the ones that are facing Capitola Avenue, what is that going to do to the year-round living experience for the people that are in the backyard? And I just, I think that you, we should have a process. And I was going to ask if it's, if there is a process anywhere for what you have to do or how we process a rezone.
So there is. It's in-state law. You have to notice and you have to go through the legislative body, the city council, to get approval. There's probably some other more minor details, but that's, that's mostly the requirement of rezoning.
So the, the notices for this one, not, not only to the people in yellow, but to people within 300 feet?
They did. And I would point out that really, at this stage, no... They did, and I would point out that really, at this stage, no noticing is required, because all we're doing tonight is we're talking about it. You know, you'll make a formal recommendation later, and the council will have adoption hearings. So, at that time, you would have to notice each individual property that would be potentially rezoned, if we're not quite there yet.
Okay, well, that's a good segue. So, what we'll do now is we'll open this up to the public to speak, and we'll give you three minutes to talk to us. And I can tell by our audience, it looks like we have El Camino Medio group, and we have a Capitola and Blue Gum group, so.
Well, we haven't got to the El Camino Medio yet, but I'll talk to you about Riverview, Blue Gum, and Capitola Avenue. I called over after I got my notice in the mail, because I am in a transient overlay district. My house is in it. At one time, Susan mentioned earlier in the meeting that my house and everything down to the trestle to Mr. Henry's house was in a commercial zone. Back in the 60s and 70s, it was re-downzoned to R1, and none of us complained. We've all been there, most of us have been there that long. But I want to get specifically to the transient overlay zone. I live next to two houses, between two houses that do rent on a regular basis under 30 days. I find no problems with it at all, because they have some parking. The ones on Blue Gum that you're proposing have no parking, and that has been a war zone for years and years. The idea of having some vacation rentals and providing parking in Pacific Cove is not viable for Blue Gum. In fact, everything north of the railroad trestle on Blue Gum and Riverview Avenue is not eligible for parking in Pacific Cove, under the present ordinance. My neighbors have been good. I'm concerned that one of the neighbors, I know very well, pays a transient occupancy fee. The other, I'm not so sure, because they just started renting this year. And the part about the proposal by staff tonight that really bothered me, and I hope I don't run out of time here, was the idea that if you, I don't know how to say this, if you didn't, you know, people that, people that rent in the jewel box, that go on vacation for a month, and they do a timeshare exchange or an exchange with somebody in Colorado, those are the real problems, not the vacation rentals. Because the vacation rentals usually have a rental agent that the neighborhood can go through, because they see the signs, and we can, you know, get rid of the loud parties and the noise late at night and the rest of it. And I really sympathize with 519 Capitola Avenue, who came before you and finally has a permit, and now is one of the ones requiring, requesting a transient occupancy zone. I agree that Capitola Avenue, all the units, including the ones Mr. Newman said, that are commercial and probably won't rent, vacation rentals. Who knows, you know, 10 years from now, or what will happen? But those with a change of the ordinance to allow parking in Pacific Cove some way, remember, this takes away from your local coastal zone parking, so be careful what you do, seemed the ideal ones. The ones where they tried to round out the block with a four, four, is it four, I think, there, on Blue Gum, should be removed from the transient overlay district. Those are really my comments. I love living near people that come from overseas and out of town. They're the best neighbors I've had, and I've been there 50 years. And so, I'm not against transient occupancy zones. I'm just interested in making sure that when you get these zones, if they don't have parking, they really shouldn't be transient occupancy for under 30 days. Because parking in the village and in Capitola has always been our number-one problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. I see one of you, I know one of you's flipping coins back there, he's gonna come up and talk.
Clarification or comments just on this part of what we discovered?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just was asking clarification, are comments just on?
Yes, we're just gonna do Capitola now, and then we'll talk about El Camino Medio, and then we'll have you up. There you go, thanks.
Hi, Dan Gomez, owner of 419 Capitola Avenue. I heard a comment brought up about, like, not having housing available for long-term renters. Like, currently, we have two studio apartments at 419 Avenue. And what we found is that it's actually, we like to rent to students. And, but the problem is, is they don't necessarily stay here over the summer, during the time when we would like to have, be able to rent it out for vacationers. And at the same time, that would allow us to have better pricing and rental rates for the long-term tenants that would stay there throughout the off-season, which is basically eight to nine months here. The summer seems to be the best time to rent it out for vacationers. But we do have a, the students don't want to stay here during the summer. They don't want to pay that during the summer months. So, they tend to want to leave, and so, that puts us in a bind to where now we have to find somebody to rent it for three months. And it's very difficult to get somebody in for three months and then try to say, hey, you gotta be gone, or are you gonna stay longer? Because then some people don't want to be there for, it's very hard to find that in this, especially for the, kind of, in the size of apartments that we have currently. So, that was one concern for us. And also, I agree, I think that all the properties along Capitola Avenue, whether they're commercial or not, at this point, at some point in the future, could be potentially redeveloped at some point in time. And it would be, seem consistent to keep those all within that TRO district and overlay. And I agree, I mean, I think that the, like, for us, we went there, we wanted to do it, the extra step to make sure, because we understand the parking concerns in Capitola. So, we made the extra effort to make sure that we can get all the parking on-site. And we understand it's a legitimate concern, and we would hope that you guys would support the opportunity for us to do that and allow us to have the TRO in this area so that, I mean, because we can provide all that parking on-site, and it doesn't increase the, obviously, the overuse of the parking lot that we currently have. And obviously, I think if you allow everybody to get, go the proper routes and do the permit route, then, I mean, it seems to me that as long as they're qualified, then it would be an acceptable thing to do, so.
Great, thanks, Dan. Okay, anybody else that would like to talk about the Capitola area, then it looks like there's none? Then I'll bring it back to the commission to see, we kind of have a couple of concepts here. One is talking about approving the Capitola Ave. side of it and not Blue Gum.
It seems like before we actually approve anything, we need to have an answer to Commissioner Ortiz's question about, you know, what are, what are the sort of legal impacts about that? And as far as I know, there's no urgency to get this approved tonight, so we easily could, you know.
Well, we're just making a recommendation to City Council, right? So, maybe we could make a recommendation if that was the flavor of the committee, that we, you know, we're okay with the Capitola Ave., or we don't want any of it. I mean, I guess it'd go either way. And then by the time it gets to the City Council, they could have a legal discussion, because really, it's a policy issue. And I, I think we can cut off some of the stuff tonight, or maybe advance some of it, it's up to you, what you folks would like to do.
Well, I think I can jump in and say that, you know, eliminating the Blue Gum side of things, I don't have any issue with that at all. And I remember when we were looking at the 419 remodel, and we all kind of had the consensus that that location makes a lot of sense for this kind of a rental. And with the noticing that we've done, I don't have any issues feeling like we're invading a neighborhood and going to change it in that particular case along Capitola Avenue. So, I could support a recommendation to City Council that they consider rezoning this area, assuming that we get the legal support that, because Gail brought up a really good point.
I agree.
And you're talking about supporting the Capitola Avenue sites only if they have parking on-site?
Correct.
They'd have to meet.
They would have to, they would have to meet the parking.
Right, and if it's all zoned, I can see, you know, redevelopment down the road, where you've got commercial below and a residential above. And if they can put parking on-site, it would, it would be eligible. And it may not be that way today, so I don't have a problem cutting off those four units. But they could be in the zone and still not be eligible.
Well, if you look at the size of the first four parcels, I mean, you know, it's possible, I suppose, they can be redeveloped to squeeze one parking space. But, you know, in terms of vacation rentals, that's really not very realistic. The Windmill House is a good example. It's not very big, but the vacation renters have four or five SUVs every time they come. And one little, I mean, you couldn't even, if they were vacant, you couldn't fit four or five cars on those lots.
Right. So, are you, are you proposing maybe we don't include that in the?
Well, I have a little bit of a self-interest perhaps in that, because I know where they'll park.
Right. But there would be parking there illegally, though, right?
Well, it's just that, you know, do you want to spend the rest of your life chasing vacationers out? I mean, it's just obvious that that's what would happen. Look at the size of those lots and how they could possibly accommodate vacationers.
So, would, so would a compromise for people, say, just doing the ones from 413 to 425?
That's what I think, I can support.
Commissioner Ortiz, you had some concerns.
I'm all right with that, as long as the parking is handled. And I know it will go through the proper, the proper noticing and all those channels so that the people further down from, on Capitola Avenue, across the street from Riverview Drive, will have a chance to weigh in on that.
Okay, so it looks like we have consensus from 413 to 425 Capitola Ave. To make a recommendation for the City Council to look at changing that area, but not the Blue Gum or the 401 through 407. Is that okay? Okay. So, now I guess we can talk about El Camino Medio. You want to move into that one? Or do you have any other questions before we move on?
We want to hear from the public first, or?
We could, do we have, do you have a new staff report on that?
No, I'll just point out that there's, there's been confusion about 216 listed twice. And 216 at the very top is 216 Monterey Avenue, and then the one.
Oh, 216 El Camino Medio, okay.
But other than that, it's the same conversation.
Okay, so we, so I guess we'll open this up for those of you in the El Camino Medio area that would like to speak. We'll give you three minutes to come up and let us hear your concerns.
Good evening, Bob Edren, candidate for City Council. I'm here on behalf of several owners, along with my family, on El Camino Medio. I spoke to this before, we're absolutely dead against it. It's like, all of a sudden, the motel's in your backyard. It's not, we've had the trial of Airbnb HomeAway with several property owners on El Camino Medio, and it's, it hasn't been a good, good situation. So, given that, I have to say, it would be a bad decision for that area, which is kind of a quaint, little quiet little street, and I'd like to see it remain that way. And in regards to the notices, apparently, I'm the only one that got one. I don't know what happened here, but I talked to several property owners that apparently did not get them. And maybe a suggestion here, maybe it's a good idea to get everyone's email now with the internet and everything, in addition to snail mail, because I think that might be a little extra thing to be able to notify people of situations like this. A lot of people are on the go, I think. I'm the only one in town tonight that could do this one. Somebody's in LA, somebody's in Donner, or wherever. So, anyway, I think most of the people had sent, the staff, some emails and whatnot. So, I'll leave it at that, and you have my, whoops, you have mine and their sentiments on that, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
I'd like to speak, I have a little question and process, though, because the other one, we spoke after you guys spoke. I know we're speaking before, but.
We could probably figure that out, go ahead.
So, I'm at 117 Central.
You need to get up to the mic, Cam.
I'm at 117 Central. So, I think it's important to understand where a piece of property is. If you look at El Sato, El Salto, and right where it dead ends, we are one of these properties. Our master bedroom sits upstairs towards the back of that lot. We already get a fair amount of noise coming up from the town. We've already had experience of the renters that are doing the 30-day rentals within Depot Hill and the noise issues that these type of renters cause, because there's not buy-in to the community. They pay a lot to come here, they're coming on vacation, it's a party. For us to see that happen to that whole area with that potential noise that could come right up into our backyard, into our bedroom at night, we are really against those being turned into vacation rentals for that reason.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, bring it back here to the commission, and we'll see what people think.
I make a recommendation that we, we don't pass this along as a positive recommendation to the council.
And I actually agree with that. You know, El Camino Medio has always been, you know, it's not zoned central village. It's always been separate. And I think that, you know, that's just sort of a vacation rental creep into a new area that, that for me, the people around it seem to not be interested in having it happen. And I don't think I could support changing that one.
I'd like to throw out one floater here and see how far it gets, which is to distinguish 190 from the others. And I mentioned that when he came in. And I took a really close look at it in anticipation of this meeting, and it differs from everything else on El Camino Medio. One, it's separated by the steps. It's located next to a parking lot. It's about 10 feet lower than all the others. And as I mentioned last time, it's a completely different concept in terms of the building. It was the first building built into the hillside there as a spec bill, spec home, and the rest are all architectural, custom homes. And it just seems to me, I don't know that there's any great reason to do it other than that that property owner has really asked us to, but it just logically, to me, it seems to be a vacation rental where it sits. It's across from a restaurant.
So, did we decide that he has parking without?
I think that's the issue.
Yeah, without people parking in, in not his, you know, because his space, he thinks he has more space than he really does.
I don't believe.
He doesn't need as many if he's a vacation rental. He needed them if he was gonna be a bed and breakfast, see, that was the problem. If it's a vacation rental, his parking's fine. Plus, he has a giant parking lot right next to him.
But he didn't meet the requirements, parking requirements for a single-family residential house, was my.
He has two, I think he has two covered, and one sideways, so he has three parking spots there.
He had, I believe, two covered, and then he was trying to keep the garage door open in order to get the other two. It's kind of a deep garage, but, and I'll ask Ryan to chime in on this, because it was his project, and he'll.
He's young, he's got a better memory.
So, the property was underparked in terms of the required parking for a single-family residence. However, for the bed and breakfast, you need to have the required parking for the single-family, and in addition, one extra space for every room being rented out.
Right.
So, he had two on-site parking spaces. If he was in the Airbnb, or sorry, in the vacation rental zone, he would be allowed to get a permit based on what he's got right now.
Okay.
Do you know how many units are in that, on that property? Is it two legal units?
That's, I have not been inside, but that's how he explained it to me, it was two legal units, second story, third story.
And he still has enough parking for that?
Yeah, the bottom floor is all garage, and it's kind of tucked into the hill.
But there's two.
But he only has two parking spaces in that garage.
I thought he had total three, I thought there was one that he could park sideways in, in the driveway, and that was a.
He was requesting to have one of those spaces, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm kind of with you, though, the way that I remember it, he had two covered, one uncovered, and he needed two uncovered. So, he was trying to figure out how to get two uncovered, and there wasn't enough space for that. But there was enough for one uncovered.
That's what I recall.
There's a good photo of it in Mr. Edren's.
The confusing part is the concrete part of that driveway, like, 10 feet of that is in the city right-of-way, so it's a little misleading by looking at that.
The only problem I have separating off 190 is what happens if that particular structure were to be torn down and a structure like is down farther, the street goes up. Then it no longer is different, it no longer sets itself apart from the rest of the neighborhood. And we've had such vocal neighborhood objection to that unit first and to the whole street second. I don't, I don't know if I could support it.
Yeah, I mean, it has two units there right now that, you know, get rented out separately. They're not vacation units, the rest of the street, single-family owns, so they have some advantage. So, at this point, it would make sense to me just to. So at this point, it would make sense to me just to not go that route.
The only thing that makes me consider that is that you're going to have a hotel there right next to it. And I think at one point, the hotel even tried buying that piece of property because it kind of fits into that corner piece. And so, you know, if something down the road goes and they're able to negotiate the hotel buying that piece of property, would that property be zone R1, not allow them to?
Well, it's so, it's not so- I guess it's R, it's zoned AR right now. And, you know, if somebody buys it to be part of the hotel, they would come into the city and ask to change it. And that would be part of the whole hotel plan.
Yeah, I, the 190 property, I kind of go, it's kind of interesting because where do you cut it off? I'm definitely not in favor of the El Camino Medio addresses. The 190 kind of is, I kind of see what Commissioner Newman's point is, is it's kind of separated to a point. And, but if we don't have consensus that way, I can go either way.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, Mr. Edgren's here and his family raised objections and they live right across the street from that parcel. So I would just leave them all out. Do we want to?
My recommendation stands.
Okay, so everyone's good with that? Yes. You may want to come up to the mic so we can. We can hear you, but the people at home can't hear you.
I've been in most of the houses on El Camino Medio in my job with PG&E for 34 years. So I'm concerned about the one at the other end of the street, which is actually fronts, the house fronts on Monterey Avenue and not El Camino Real Media. That's, I believe it's 216, isn't it? Now, that was the first bed and breakfast ever in Capitola. And I don't know what it's being used at today because I haven't been in it in a long time. But it never had a complaint from any neighbor, anybody else. It sits directly across the street from the large apartment building that used to be owned by Peter Hubick. And I wondered, you know, I almost wonder if it was grandfathered in some years ago. So I'm not pulling for it. I think you guys are going in the right direction. And I was here for the meeting on the one that you brought up, Ed. And everything you said is right. The parking pads in front of the garage encroaching the right away for the street. And that's the reason that he didn't have sufficient parking for a B and B. I'll leave it at that.
And I think the gentleman from 216 was at our last meeting and was not in favor of the 190 project, so. Okay, so it looks like we have a consensus not to move this portion forward to city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll provide an update on the legal review.
Okay, thanks.
Before your final recommendation. Okay, so next we're going to lead into village parking. And I'm going to give you just an update, a little reminder of where we were and how the planning commission reacted to each of the changes. And this is really specific to the village, not the whole chapter on parking. And the parking code has not been, the section for parking has not been updated to reflect the changes. They were just within your staff report. But you all have a, I sent out updated copies today, just not updated, but the most recent redlined planning commission. For parking. So we met on September 8th with city council for a special meeting to discuss parking in the village and-
You have an extra one of those I don't think I got this afternoon and on your doorstep.
We have an extra.
There you go. Thank you.
But it is not updated to reflect the city council requested changes. So this is the red lines of planning commission. Okay, so the last time we were together talking about parking, the planning commission asked us to get a read from the city council. There's, as we know, a large parking issue within the village that it's not only how do we regulate it and put a number attached to each type of land use, but also there's a supply issue that within the zoning code update, the INLU discusses, but kind of looking at the bigger picture before we, before the planning commission makes the final recommendation. So we went back to the planning commission and we brought forth the key revisions to the draft zoning code that affect the village itself. So on this slide, I have the different items that we'll be going over tonight. I have a slide on each of these. So first is takeout food and beverage. The previous code allowed one space for, takeout food and beverage is one space for 240 square feet. The way in which we calculated that was you could have up to six seats to classify as a takeout food and beverage. There was no tie to square footage. The new code has been modified to state up to 300 square feet of area that's accessible to the public. And when the city council took a look at this, they thought that was a great change to the code. Expansions or enlargements of non-residential uses. So currently, additional parking is required for any enlarged area or expanded area. The new code, through many thoughtful discussions, you landed on eating and drinking establishments may expand 20% of the existing floor area without providing parking. And in order to do so, it must be within the existing building footprint or within a new outdoor dining area. So the buildings can't be added on to, but they can be expanded within or they can be in new outdoor dining. City council also thought this was a great addition in a way for, in which the local businesses could benefit, so. Then there's also a new section within the zoning code that talks about parking, onsite parking alternatives. And when this went to the traffic and parking commission, they recommended that this section should not be applicable to the village. When we took it to planning commission, we expressed that. And the planning commission during the meeting asked us to remove the low demand study, the transportation demand management plan allowance, and also shared parking. So the updated red lines are very clear that these three items are not applicable in the central village. The city council, the one item that they'd like you to reconsider is the shared parking. It was, the conversation was basically that it's a mixed-use village. There's a lot of buildings that have living area on the second floor. There's living and I think offices and allowed use on second floors. And that it could be detrimental to some of those establishments in which we want to keep it mixed-use and have people living on second stories, but that by not allowing shared parking, it could be detrimental. So they would like a reconsideration of that within, because the village is mixed-use. INLU parking, we took the INLU proposal that will definitely be modified within the next set of red lines. But currently, there's a policy that the city council follows that it's our current INLU spaces are, may only be utilized for a large hotel in the village that has valet parking. This has been added to the zoning code to make it official, so it's no longer just a policy. And then all, it was, all the spaces were applicable to the large hotel that has valet parking in the future. The city council added that a maximum of 10 spaces would be applicable to a small visitor-serving hotel in the village so that if, say, the Capitola Hotel wanted to expand, they could utilize some of the spaces, INLU spaces, or if there were a different small hotel that came up in the village, they could utilize some of the spaces, so. And we can, we'll be talking about that next week. Also, we'll be doing an update to the city council with the INLU policy next week. And then another discussion that came up is parklets. And I should draw to your attention that parklets is actually not in the parking section of the code. It is in the supplemental regulations section within the citywide, so it's 17.96. And it was near the temporary use section where we have all those just different standards. So within the original view, review of this, it was to be limited to the village only. The parklets are little dining decks typically that are placed within parking spaces. And it would be limited to one outdoor dining area per restaurant. So if a restaurant already has outdoor dining, they would not be allowed to apply for one of the parklets. The process would be a conditional use permit by planning commission and an encroachment permit by the city council. When we came before the planning commission with this, it, the advice was it wasn't thought out well enough, I think, within the draft code. It didn't seem to have, be tight enough. And the suggestion was to remove it at this junction in the zoning code update. The city council, looking at this, would like us to come forth in October with a draft, it's not going to be an ordinance, but a pilot program to allow maybe one or two of these in the village and let them try it for a year, see if it's even something we would like in the village as a test run. So rather than codifying it, so. So just to summarize, the city council asked that we, that the planning commission reconsider the shared parking in the village. They also updated the INLU to expand it up to 10 parking spaces for small visitor-serving hotels. And also asked that staff return with a pilot parklet program for dining decks in the central village.
So really, the only thing, only issue we need to make a recommendation on is number one?
Yes.
What?
Number one.
Shared parking in the village to allow studies in the future.
And I think I was probably the one who argued most against not, not having that in the zoning ordinance. And part of my reasoning is that there's really, as far as I know, only a couple places where there is parking to be shared. And so, you know, if you want to change it and say that, you know, for developments that actually have parking, if they want, if they want to, you know, do a study for the planning commission and council to consider, then, you know, I wouldn't jump up and down and scream. But, you know, it seems like they have to be able to provide some parking for us to reduce the parking requirements for shared parking.
And I think it, it should be, they pay for the study, but we do the study.
Right.
They don't get to go do their own study.
Right.
That was one of the red lines that was placed in the update. A parking demand study prepared by a specialized consultant contracted by the community development director, paid for by the applicant and approved by the planning commission.
You know, I mean, to be honest, I mean, there's only like two properties that could even consider doing this. Maybe three.
Yeah, there may be a couple more. I think that's where we started and a couple councilmen have pointed out a couple of additions. But you're right, I mean, there's only a handful at the very most that could do it.
Exactly. Any other discussion?
I have some other changes though in the, in the red line that I noted. Page 76-9, the top paragraph R1 zoning district where it says, "See Figure 1776-1", I had notes that we corrected that to 17.60-1. And-
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I just found my place here.
Where it says, "See Figure 1776-1", I think it should say 17.60-1.
The figure-
The figure, the figure number is just a-
Wrong.
Wrong.
Thank you.
Moving to page 76-13, is valet space included in the glossary?
I don't think it is.
I had noted that it should be so that we're really clear on what a valet space is. And I also had a question about the 25% off-site. My notes reflected, excuse me, that the planning commission may allow up to 25% of the required onsite parking spaces to be off-site valet spaces. And valet parking shall comply with the following standards, meaning that valet space, you could have 100% of your parking valet spaces. Only 25% of those could be off-site was how I interpreted it. And I, I don't know if I was alone in that, but that's, I don't see why we want to limit them to only 25% valet spaces.
So, I mean, I agree with you, only 25% valet spaces off-site.
Right.
But if they want to have a garage under the hotel that's valet parking because they can park more cars or use lifts, we wouldn't object to that onsite.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay.
You guys okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, and on page 76-17, item E3, we now have the tandem parking space is reduced to nine feet by 18 feet, but I think it should say the minimum size of an uncovered tandem parking space instead of the minimum width. And I think that was, I beat this one to death and I may have lost it, but I didn't write down in my notes that I had. So I'm bringing it up one last time. 76-21, we're talking about bicycle parking spaces. And in rack design, we're being very specific that the racks must be capable of locking both the wheels and the frame of the bicycle and of supporting bicycles in an upright position, which removes any creativity from doing any kind of vertical. And I've seen some really cool-
I saw some really neat vertical ones in Seattle last week.
And they're, they're really-
They take up a lot less space. They, they worked great. They were right downtown Seattle.
Isn't that upright?
Yeah, the bikes are upright, not like this. Well, they park them on their back wheel upright like that and so.
So what is the definition of upright in this?
Vertical.
It's very upright. So it's not laying down on the ground, the way I read it, but.
So we just need a little more flexibility in that wording.
I'll draw to your attention I on this next page. It says, "Creative Design Solutions. The planning commission may allow creative approaches to providing required bicycle parking spaces, including vertical wall-mounted bicycle racks if physical site constraints render compliance with the bicycle parking design standards impractical or undesirable." Is that okay or would you rather the other standards not be so stringent? If G ended after bicycles and didn't say in an upright position and it were closer to I, I'd be okay.
So the upright position again, at least what comes to my mind is that the alternatives are laying on the ground.
Yeah, exactly.
Or underground.
Yeah.
So maybe I'm just missing something, but is there a scenario where we'd want that?
I see it the same way.
The upright position, they're not laying on the ground.
Right.
They take the bicycle and it's on its back wheel. And the front wheel, the one I saw, actually sort of fit into a groove in handlebars. But they were, you know, sort of parked this way, so they didn't stick out like that. There wasn't a lot of room around this area I was in for bicycle parking. So I, I agree with council and Commissioner Smith. I think we just want some flexibility in there so we don't say-
Yeah, I think I kind of does that for me. I kind of see the, you know, examples of vertical wall-mounted.
Yeah, right.
The vertical would be still upright, but-
So in other words, maybe you're talking about horizontal instead of vertical. So maybe we just need to add the word horizontal in, in the first letter because it's, someone's going to get confused about the word vertical if you use it twice. Once meaning that, that both wheels are on the ground and in another, only one is on the ground.
Yeah, when I read upright, I'm thinking both wheels have to be on the ground to be upright. When you're talking vertical, vertical is one, one wheel, maybe on the ground, maybe not.
But allows that, right? This, this allows that. Maybe we just need a definition of those so that, because the rack design talks about the upright and then in the creativity part, it talks about it's okay for it to be vertical.
Yeah. Yeah. I would just suggest you and Ben reread this because he's quite the bicycle person and make certain that there is some flexibility in there.
We'll work on something.
And maybe we just put them together so that's not at the end of the- And maybe we just put them together so that's not at the end of the page.
Sure.
Because I think that should really be encouraged. I've seen some really cool, and it sounds like you've seen some too. There's not enough space for bicycles. They've got to get creative with them.
Did you finish your edits?
Yes, sir.
Because I wanted to go back to what's on the board here.
Okay.
I've been trying to think of where a parklet would work at an existing restaurant. Did the City Council have any specific examples of where it might fit?
I think they did. Cava or...
And actually, they don't because those are diagonal parking spaces. It's not, it's not going to work there.
Can you imagine having a dining table in one of those?
There are a number of places that have the diagonal ones. You know, we've had a little bit of time to look at some design standards other jurisdictions use, and often they have a four or five foot separation on the out, the buffer between the edge of the parklet and the other parking space to give you some separation from parked cars. And there are a number of them that are vertical. It doesn't strike me as a preferred design, but it's, it's been done and apparently somewhat successful.
So, a couple examples could be El Toro Bravo, in front of El Toro Bravo, also the Thai Restaurant on Monterey.
I was thinking of that one.
Thai one, yeah.
Also, the Deli...
Hasn't the Thai Restaurant on Monterey gone away?
Has it?
I got to say...
One of them has, and not the other one.
Also, the Deli on Monterey.
Yeah.
In the Superintendent Building.
Well, the City Council knows better, but I got to tell you, I mean, the image of like Campbell, if you, you know, you've seen the dining areas there where it makes sense to have something like that.
Wide sidewalks.
Versus Capitola where you're going to have just some diagonal parking space suddenly have a, have a dining table in it.
Yeah, I don't...
I'm looking forward to seeing this happen.
I can report that it was an unanimous decision. I think they went through three or four motions before they got one to pass. The area that seemed to be discussed the most was on San Jose.
Yeah.
But I expect a more, another lively discussion in October when we...
So, it is a little confusing if you say on the diagonal ones, because they're saying only two spaces. So, I assume the buffer is within those two spaces. It suddenly doesn't become four spaces. And I will say, I think the people I feel the sorries for are the few people who actually still live in the village because the parking spaces they can use with their parking permits are going away quickly.
Yeah, I'm not confident this is going to be a big issue, but...
Yeah, and I suppose like Zeldas could have...
No, they have, they have an outdoor, they already have outdoor.
They have outdoors, okay.
Pizza my heart.
Pizza my heart.
Pizza my heart could.
That one would make sense because, you know...
All of Capitola is that it's outdoor.
The Seagulls love it.
Is there any way to register? I mean, we said no, they said yes. So, we don't have anything to do at this point other than...
We're just reporting that.
I don't agree with it.
Well, I don't agree with it either, so I'm happy to send them and say, you know...
I think you can certainly register opposition. Keep in mind, they're, they're not at this time suggesting to be put in the ordinance, but as a City Council policy. But you're free, it's my end you say you to register your objections if you so choose.
Yeah, I think this is one of those things, it's a, it's a neat concept, but when you really look at the village, it's really hard to make it fit the village. That's the...
Well, with ADA access and all the things at America, you know, when you go to Europe, nobody minds that somebody puts a table out and encroaches on the sidewalk a little bit because it's, you know, they're used to it, but that's not going to fly here, and that's why we have to put it on, in a parking place.
So, do we have a direction we want to move, give the City Council on this?
I think that my direction would be, I think they need to be careful about, you know, the parklet program and, you know, hopefully come up with locations that reasonably work and aren't diagonal parking.
Can I make a comment?
Can you come back up to the mic?
Sorry. But this is different than what went on at the meeting with the council that I was at. I think staff had pointed out that the council asked that parklets be studied separately. That, it was pointed out by speakers, including myself, that a lot of the things they were talking about had outside dining and they aren't eligible for parklets. But the, the overhead visual that they showed that night, and I believe the possible parklets were in red, they didn't include a lot of other units that have no outside dining that could be parklets. I think of where we just did the intersection at the corner of Stockton and the Espinade. You know, it's got an ice cream shop and also a place next to it. It was the old Lino's Cafe that I know it has. And this all came about, at least it was expressed at the meeting that I attended, because Caruso's and Cava would like to have something there. And when you think about taking away two diagonal spaces, the discussion was that you really can't get the parklet in there because you're going to lose the space on each side of the parklet. So, you're really giving up four parklets, uh, four parking spaces for two. And then you get into the Coastal Commission with regard, with regards to reducing space within the coastal zone for parking. And that, this is the old bugaboo that we've had for years and years. I thought about this long and hard after I left the meeting, and one of the interesting things, the next day, the mayor came and had breakfast with me and he said, you know, I thought about the parklets and he says, I, I could only buy two, having not even had the meeting on the parklets yet, but I could only support two. And I said, how are you going to do that? Are you going to have a lottery? I mean, who do you, who gets these two special parklet spaces when I can count almost nine? So, I think this is one, you got to really look at what's down there and be very careful with. And they told us that they were going to have a special meeting on it, so I hope that still holds. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe, Director Grino, you're kind of shaking your head. No, but didn't they say...
No, there's no special meeting scheduled for that.
They were going to continue to a different meeting, though, so they could get more input?
No, they didn't continue it. They directed staff to return with some options for a pilot program for parklets.
Okay, okay.
So, either the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh of October will return, identify some issues, some design standards, cost is going to be a big issue.
Okay.
You know, what would the fees and payments be for such a thing? We would need a coastal development permit, and so that's in play. I, I don't have a clear response from Coastal Commission yet whether or not they go along with it or not.
And people want to do the INLU program, and the number of spaces that are available for an INLU program get reduced every time something like this happens. So, ten are going to go to a small hotel, then four more are going to go away because of the parklet thing. I mean, I do think...
They put their table out there, shouldn't they have another parking space too besides the one they're taking?
Yeah, I mean, there's... It depends on whether it's more than twenty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
They can go twenty percent.
Well, that, that's not in place yet, though, but there, I mean, that's an interesting point. You have to look at, you know, the additional demand, the parking for that, the displacing the parking, and then how do you figure out the cost? There's parking revenue that's generated at that spot. There's costs for INLU space if they're going to apply that, so...
I think we should send a strong recommendation back that we simply feel that the village is an inappropriate location for parklets.
I agree with that.
Do parklets at Forty-first Avenue somewhere, but not, it's, it's just not appropriate for the village.
It'd be great to have them, but it doesn't work.
We'll meet them at high noon.
Well, I would... Are these, are these, we're talking about temporary spots, right? These aren't permanent...
You might have to.
Well, the way, the way I understood the Council's direction, certainly they could change, was that it was going to be a pilot program for, I think they said, a year, and it might need to be two to make a pencil out for anyone to try it if that...
But, you know, those spaces are gone all year.
No, I, I guess that's what I'm trying to find out. Are the par, is this for like, we're going to, let's just say, the Village Cream or whatever it's called now, would like to do it and we're going to, it doesn't have outside dining currently, they're going to do it, but they only want to do it for two months during the winter months. Is this, is this going to be a permanent where they're, where they're...
I, I think it would be more of the latter than, than...
Okay.
You know, they didn't discuss a kind of seasonal allowance, and my guess is that the cost of permitting, building it, it, it just wouldn't make sense to do it for two or three months.
Yeah, well, then, okay. I'm on board. You guys, so I think our direction is we're not in favor of this concept and...
And my recommendation is that, you know, you could take it or leave it, would be that you maybe designate a Planning Commissioner to appear at that hearing and speak on the commission's behalf. I'm certainly happy to relay the sentiments.
I think Commissioner Westman, you...
Yeah.
I know your husband's going to be there.
I'm happy to, I have to go, no, anyway.
Exactly.
Can I make a, a real quick point here, a little footnote on the angles of spaces, kind of like angles of bicycle racks. There's actually three angles to a parking space. There's the, I'm going to call it the parallel parking, which is right along, parallel to the sidewalk, which would be like El Toro Bravo.
Right.
Then you've got a perpendicular parking space, which would be like in front of, I'm not sure if they're angled or straight in.
We, we know, we know what that is, yeah.
Okay. And then you got the diagonal.
Right.
So, there's kind of three. And if you take a, a parallel space, that would be probably equal to a twenty-foot wide length in length, probably two, equal to two parking spaces that are perpendicular. Just a little footnote there.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, so where, you, you comfortable with the direction on that, on the parklets?
So, we are in the reconsideration of shared parking. We're going to take away the prohibiting shared parking studies in the village, and that's the direction we got there.
As long as they have parking onsite.
As long as they have parking onsite, yeah. And we are also in terms of the pilot parklets, it sounds like Commissioner Westman will be present at a meeting, and in our presentation, we'll also make sure to echo your comments tonight of it's not appropriate in the village, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for volunteering for that.
I'll have to get an hour to write me a speech so I can read it.
He will, I'm sure.
So, that concludes staff's presentation this evening.
Great.
Great.
See, I told you we'd get out here early.
So, the mechanical lift thing, it stays as it has been in the thing, right? It wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, okay.
So, do we want to talk about our next meeting dates, or is it just our regular schedule?
Actually, sorry, I do have, I wanted to go over one additional thing. I forgot about the slide. So, I wanted to walk you through quickly. I've got two more slides.
Okay.
One of where the Planning Commission redlines are. So, I'm just going to take you to the city website really quick. Maybe not really quick, but quick enough. Okay, so under City Government, you're going to scroll down to the Community Development page. And on the Community Development page, we have all the what's new, what's going on. So, the first item under what's new is the zoning code update, and there you'll simply click on More. And so, here we list what the upcoming meetings are for the zoning code update. We'll be adding some meetings in October for the City Council. And directly under that, we put in the Planning Commission edits. So, the red lines that you've made that have gone to City Council are listed here. I'm still waiting for edits for Historic Resources, that update. So, there's just a piece of paper in there that's placeholder that says, coming. And then also the glossary needs to be updated, which we have your edits for that, and then the edits of this evening will also be updated here. So, it is available for you to look at at this point, and I just wanted to make sure you're aware. So, you'll go to City Government, you'll scroll down to Community Development on the main page, and then you'll go down to what's new, you'll see the zoning code update and click on More, okay?
Great.
And then for our next meeting on October sixth, we'll present to you the Wireless Chapter. We've just, we've been working through that. We were trying to get it on this meeting, but it was just too close and we wanted to really go through that with a fine comb. So, we'll be distributing that as soon as it's ready. We'll get that over to you. And then we're hoping to get a recommendation on your red lines at this point to City Council. Once we've, and the council's been looking through the red lines that you've already told us were okay, but we'd like to bring you exactly what you just saw, plus the Historic Chapter and Wireless and the Glossary and the changes that were made this evening. And I'll make sure that they're, they're accessible, that each part is there for you to access and see all your changes, and ask for a recommendation to City Council. Then the City Council is working through their modifications, so I'm hoping to use a new color when it comes to the City Council modifications. So, like, instead of the red lines, we'll have blue, strikeout and additions, and those, once we have all of their comments, we'll be bringing it back to you. And then the final document will go on to City Council for adoption. So, that's what we're planning for our October sixth Planning Commission, and we're going to try to get that ahead.
Are we going to have that in one document so we can go through the whole thing, the whole zoning code in order?
Yes. Would you like a printed, updated of all the Planning Commission red lines at this point in one binder? Would that be the best way?
That would be really nice.
That would be hugely helpful.
Okay, I can do that.
And if we could get it, you know, a couple of weeks before the sixth, that would be helpful, too.
Which is, which is pretty much now.
Yeah. Well, I'll try my best to get it...
A week.
To you as, as early as possible on that. So, and it, and it might be, I'll, I'll keep you updated and...
Even if you got all of the bulk of it to us, you know, early, so that we can go through it against all of our notes, and then the Wireless section comes and we can put that in the, you know? Because right now, I was trying to put mine back together so that I could go through it and...
I tried to do that, too, and I just, I... We have some that were redlined at one meeting and then redlined at another meeting, and I couldn't figure out what was the one we finally decided on and...
I don't, I don't need them, you know, in bulk. I actually would prefer to get them as you have them ready, even if you call, you know, email us and let us know, we'll come down and figure it out. You know, I'd rather get them a chap, a chapter or a section at a time and have, instead of all of them at the end, and have fewer, less time for all of them.
I think that's a great suggestion, and I think we appreciate your flexibility in that regard. I think we can probably get you eighty, ninety percent of those red lines within a matter of days.
Right.
And then we'll give you some slip-in chapters as we finish those up over the following days, but that's great.
And I'm happy to come pick them up.
Yeah.
Good. So, with that, we want to, oh, I guess, do we have a director comments or...
No, the only thing I had for you this evening was just the upcoming hearings this Thursday, as a matter of fact, I told, whispered over to Katie incorrectly that it was next week, but it'll be this Thursday. We're going to talk about the INLU parking fee policy. I will present the council with a revised draft policy that'll allow ten INLU space to be used for a small hotel. The twenty-ninth, they have a special zoning ordinance meeting, which will be at six o'clock in this room. And then sometime in October, the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh, we'll present the parklet pilot project for discussion with them.
Did I see we had this at a twenty-eighth me, oh, that must have been for City Council?
City Council.
I got it, okay.
I thought so, too. So, our October sixth Planning Commission meeting is not going to have a bunch of new projects on it. It's primarily going to be to set this up.
We currently have three projects scheduled for that meeting. So, we'll start at six and start the special meeting. They're mostly additions to single-family homes, but there's, they're a little bit technical with parking, and so I think all three will be on the regular agenda.
Okay, so I guess if we could get a motion to continue this to October sixth at six o'clock?
I just have one announcement that I want to make sure I don't forget to tell everybody. I'm going to be gone for the November meetings, plural, if there are multiple meetings. I'm going to leave on October sixteenth and I'll be back on November twentieth.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I, I do want to make certain, you know, once we sort of get our final document put together, that before we're going to vote on it, you know, we're going to make it available to the public as sort of a final document with some sort of summary about, you know, the major changes that are in there because I, I do think we need to give the public the opportunity to, you know, review it and comment on it in its final form before we vote on it and make a recommendation to the council.
Yeah, staff concurs. The way I envision it will play out is if all goes as we hope, October sixth, you'll give a recommendation on the document that you're passing along to City Council. We're still going to have a few more meetings with them, is my guess. They will consider all your recommendations, change them as they may. At the end of their process, we're going to be busy going back and making final revisions. We'll try to sh... We'll try to show how the council changed what you presented to them. We'll come back to the Planning Commission, have at least one, probably more, public meetings to go after those, and then up to the City Council. And during that time, we'll provide public notice again, try to get the word out that, you know, it's coming time to make the final decision, so...
So are we going to get an update from you about where the Coastal Commission is on our final draft when we talk about it?
So the status with that is it's, I have a little bit of empathy for Coastal Commission staff in that what they've been reviewing has been a moving target a little bit. You know, we've presented them something, they give us some comments, and a lot of that's changed in some areas that will, I think, be, they'll have a high level of interest in. So at this stage, how I would propose that we go forward is that we adopt the code that we like without, I don't, I don't want to say without paying attention to them, but without making a lot of big policy decisions without the benefit of negotiation. Once we adopt it locally, I think we can have negotiations in earnest with them. And at some point, we'll have to return on some of those key policy issues and get direction from the commission and council. So there likely will be, you know, a period of time where we have a coastal zoning ordinance, the existing one, and a new code that's outside the coastal zone.
How's that going to be applied?
So can't you, um, isn't there a way for you to not have a new code outside? I mean, if you want to keep it all the same, there's methods to do that.
I, I think there are. I mean, I would, I would talk to the city attorney about that, but I have to imagine that we could, we could sort of, you know, give it a soft adoption or something and, you know, an intent to adopt it once the Coastal Commission and we come to an agreement. My recommendation would be, even though it's only maybe a third of the city, it's still an improvement for that third of a city to work with. And I, I would hope that we could put it in place for, for that area. But at, at the end of the day, it'll be a policy call that council will make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a now, now motion.
Do you continue to October sixth?
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.